Here we go. Okay, see, and then it's seven o'clock. Called the meeting on the Halifax Planning Board, the order taking place at 499 Columbus Street in Halifax, in the meeting room on the second floor for October 3rd, 2024 at 7:00 PM. Just to make everybody aware, it's open meeting and announced that the planning board meeting is being recorded by Area 58 and can be viewed on YouTube. Okay, uh, what I'm gonna do is there is a presentation for tonight. I'm gonna ask the board for a motion if we gotta pick it out of order before we move on. I understand it's maybe a 10 or 15 minute presentation, so how's the board feel about doing that first, getting it out of the way? I'll entertain a motion if someone like to make one.
I'll move that for you.
Do I have a second?
I'll second. Cool, me? Second.
Okay, I have a motion and second on the floor to have the presentation out of order on the agenda. All those in favor, I'll ask for a voice vote. I'm ready.
Aye.
Myself, yes.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous. Well, why don't we do that first then? Mr. Shea? You have the floor.
And they catch, and they catch everything. Everything.
Well, as everyone has seen, there's signs on the, on the streets and everything else that says, well, yes, on, on question six. And a lot of people don't even know what question six is. Don't be able to explain what question six is. And it's the Community Preservation Act. It's investing together in the future of Halifax. Okay, the Community Preservation Act allows communities to establish a fund specifically dedicated to historical preservation, open space, recreation, and affordable housing. Funds are collected at one and a half annual contribution local, on local property taxes. Eighty-eight dollars annual for a Halifax resident assessment. Exemption for the first hundred thousand dollars of assessed property value applies to all. Exception for qualified ownership of Halifax, A, low-income houses, moderate and low-income senior households. The taxpayers receiving irregular property tax abatement or exemption will also receive a pro-rated reduction in surcharge. Okay, using Halifax FY 2004 Tax Rate Average Residential Assessment. Right now, a single-family home at 511,243 dollars, the rate is fourteen dollars and twenty-eight cents, your tax would be 7,355 dollars. I can attest to that. CPA resident exception is a hundred thousand dollars. The state put that in and that's it. You take a hundred thousand dollars off of that, it's now 411,243 dollars. Your tax base is now 5,872 dollars and fifty-five cents. Now, the surcharge is one and a half percent on that tax rate. It's eighty-eight dollars. The surcharge is eighty-eight dollars. That eighty-eight dollars is then applied to your, your tax of the year. So it's 7,888. That rate will not change unless the value of your house goes up. That will always be there every year, year after year, until your, the valuation goes up, a hundred thousand goes up one and a half percent, which just add maybe ten dollars to it, five dollars to it. If your taxes go up, it does have to attach, uh, the, uh, what do you call it?
Assessment?
No, no, um, after we have our town meetings and then the taxes will go up, this will always stay the same as the value, as long as your value of your house stays. Halifax CPA income exemptions, a resident making, resident over sixty years old, making less than seventy-six thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars with one person living in the house will, will be able to go to an assessor's office and be able to get an abatement. A resident under sixty, making, with one person at the house, making, under sixty, one thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars, will also do the same thing in the assessor's, and that works all the way down to how many people are in the household. So if you feel that, you know, you're not making that, you go to the assessor's office, they'll make adjustments to it. Okay. How much would be collected? Twenty-eight hundred tax bills in Halifax is twenty-eight hundred times eighty-eight per tax bill. Estimated money available annual for community investment projects is 246,400 dollars based on average only, plus annual variable state contribution not included here, and then the state will let us know later on how much we will get. And that would be added to that 246,400 dollars. These are the towns that are now in it. And as you see, Halifax is one. East Bridgewater, Brockton, and Avon are not in the group. Everyone else you see, including the Avons, are all taking the CPA money right now. And they're all around us. So far, the total CPA distribution from Bridgewater has been 3,566,000 dollars. If you see some of these figures, some of these people entered twenty years ago, or eighteen years ago when they first started. So they got a bigger amount and, and they've been in the program for a long time. And as we see, like, Plimpton got in late, but they still have 363,000 dollars from the state that was given to us, to them. And West Bridgewater, 734,000. The, over the last five years, the average CPA contribution has been 26.6% over the last five years, so. Difference between CPA and standard taxes, fundraised to receive additional annual state contribution. Residents decide how funds are spent. Can be used as matching funds that are required by many states and federal grants. Funds dedicated typically unfunded, underfunded or unfunded projects, unexpected funds secure interest, and owe no obligation to spend in any given year, but the people decide how it's gonna be spent. CPA passes on the ballot, what next? Develop a bylaw establishing Community Preservation Committee, CPC. Vote on CPC bylaw on May 20, 2025 town meeting. CPC drafts a community preservation plan, first assessment would be November of 20, of 2025. CPC reviews and facilitates all proposals. Minimum 10% funds placed in three categories. Historical preservation, 10%. Open space restoration, 10%. Affordable housing, 10%. Residents determine allocation for remaining 70%. Who's on a committee or preservation committee? Anywhere from five to nine members. Conservation Committee, Historical Commission, Housing Authority, Part Commission, Planning Board, and up to four at-large members. Those are the ones that determine things. How funds are managed and dispersed? CPC receives, reviews, and considers all project requests. CPC submits recommendations in town meeting through articles. Town meeting approval required for all CPA expenditures. We come before the board, they review it, if they think it's feasible, they'll put it on an article, and then you people, everybody votes for it at a town meeting. Completed projects that could have qualified. Pops Playground cost 250,000 dollars and it took seven years to make it, to build it. Walking Trail Renovations, 15,000. Gaga Ball Pit, 2,000. Open space and recreation future projects that could qualify. Community Gardens, Dog Park, Tennis and Basketball Courts, Halifax Walking Trails. Projects, open space and recreation, future projects that could qualify as town beach rejuvenation and ADA compliance. Land acquisition, purchase properties through right of first refusal. Project Historical Preservation, completed projects that could have qualified. Blacksmith Shop repairs, Brockton Store relocation. Project Historical Preservation, future projects that could qualify. Blacksmith Shop, Houseford Restoration, Digital Historical Museum Documents, Historic Cemetery Preservation. Projects, affordable housing. Purchase and convert vacant space into affordable housing for seniors or veterans. Purchase and rehabilitate existing vacant housing as affordable units and plan and develop new units. CPA Eligible Five-Year Capital Plan Purchases. Town Hallix Exterior Restoration Society Gardens, et cetera, estimated 750,000 dollars. Recreation Courts, estimated 350,000 to 500,000. Open Spaces to Recreation, 35,000. A Restoration of Blacksmith Shop, 350,000. And these are the, these are the websites you can go to. Halifax, MAHope.org, email hopeforhalifax@gmail.com, and CPAWebsiteCommunityPreservation.org. Did I just take a minute just away from the screen here? We have received from our committee the different towns that have contributed and have done projects. And I think the biggest problem we have is the, um, the housing. Everybody's all upset about the housing. Like, they think that we're gonna be building things down the railroad tracks, we're gonna be building down Route 58, we're gonna be putting high-rise buildings in here. We're starting really late. You need millions of dollars to do these things. But there's, there's, um, Plimpton put a chairlift to allow handicapped and elderly to attend function on the second floor of Plimpton Historical Building. Hanson, Hanson Housing Authority to develop a housing production plan to assist in addressing the town's need for affordable housing. They're just, and remember, you people can vote on these things at a town meeting if it comes up. Pembroke, purchase and install a backup generator for community building at Maplewood Court, affordable housing for elderly and disabled Pembroke. Two, grant to Pembroke Housing Authority a new roof for McDonald's Way Residence, affordable housing for elderly and disabled Pembroke. This is Hannover, and they got in early, and they got, they got, what? State total of 22 million dollars, those people had. To assist South Shore Habitat for Humanity to construct an affordable single-family house on Waller Street. Center Street renovation and restoration of a farmhouse for community housing. Have a purchase and rehabilitate program. Reclaim abandoned foreclosure properties, rehabilitate and resell as affordable housing. Habitat Home to purchase materials to assist in funding construction of a Habitat for Humanity home. You have Bridgewater. Bridgewater Housing Authority Windows Project, remove existing window, uh, wooden windows and replace them with insulated windows. McAllen School Redevelopment Project, joint venture for funding of a community housing redevelopment project. You got West Bridgewater. Purchase of generator for West Bridgewater Housing Authority. West Bridgewater Housing Authority Restoration of a balcony at the West Bridgewater Housing Authority located at 7 Esther Drive. Plymouth, and they got plenty of money. The 55,942 dollars they've, they've been, over those years, they did it right away. Habitat for Humanity, Long Pond Road, Grand Habitat for Humanity funding for construction of three units of deed restricted housing on Long Pond Road authorized by the Select Board. For historic preservation, restoration, rehabilitation of Sims House and the creation of two affordable housing units. The Sims House is the one in Mannament. If you go to Mannament Center, head down toward the beach, it's a nice old Victorian house. And they worked on that for years, so they're gonna make it affordable housing for the... Middleworld. Nemasket Apartment Roof, to replace roofs to improve housing conditions for eight senior housing units. Nemasket Windows, the front portion of the Middleworld Housing Authority Nemasket Apartment Window Project, which will make energy efficient improvements in 12 elderly housing units in two buildings. Kingston. Habitat for Humanity, contribution to Habitat for Humanity House built in Kingston. Funding of Kingston Municipal Affordable Trust Fund. Transfer community fund, housing funds to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Thank you for your patience. Yep, thank you for your patience. That's it. I just thought I would add that to us, to us, because that's a very big concern about the housing and affordable housing, you know. But it's not just building these big buildings and everything else, it's what we already have and try to keep. Okay? Thank you for your time.
I'm gonna open up two questions from members of the board first. Bernie?
Do we have to go in order?
No.
Can I piggyback off of something else?
Anybody have any questions?
I think you've covered pretty much everything.
Do you want me to go before you?
Go ahead.
All right. My, my only question, or my big concern would just be that, unfortunately, if there's a loophole to be found, somebody will find it.
Yeah.
So I know the people vote on it, but anybody that's been to one of our town meetings, some things get buried, some things get put at the end of the agenda, so that it's when everybody else has to go home at midnight, and then all of a sudden, somebody's got something that they wanna push through. So I guess my, I mean, I love the idea of it, it's just more like, what are the repercussions if somebody gets caught with their hand in the cookie jar, where the people can actually stand up and go, this is, this isn't how it's supposed to be used?
Well, first of all, you're not, this isn't reason appropriate and come from available funds. This is a, you have the money in the bank, and what you're doing is you're drawing the money out of the bank to pay for that particular article.
Right.
You ever been down at a town meeting and they say, the water department wants a new truck? Or they need something? They take it from market revenue. You've already paid for that. You paid for your water bills. It's not reason appropriate, you're paying for it. This is the same thing. This is the, this will not go up unless the value of your house goes up.
I meant more like, how do we keep, how do we keep the committee with the checks and balances to make sure that the committee is doing the right thing and putting the right things on the articles, so that the residents can actually vote on the right thing?
I would think they would put it on a, put it in the paper saying that this, these are the articles that are gonna come up. This is the committee that is formed, and these are the recommendations that the committee is gonna set forward to the town.
Okay.
And if they want any change, you go to the committee and voice your opinion.
Who holds, who co-holds the committee accountable?
I don't know.
That's the question. That's my thing. Is it, it's more of just a, just a, how do we keep from people who may have malicious intentions?
Sure.
From taking advantage of what we're supposed to be building up the parks for our future generations? And I have a three-year-old and a two-year-old. You wanna build up the playgrounds? I'm all for it, I'll pitch in extra.
Mr. Sealy, you have information?
I do. Could I, could I speak? Mr. Shea?
Sure.
Is that all right? Yeah, so, so if CPA does pass, we have to create a community preservation committee, which John was saying. There has to be five members, kind of representing the five different arms of the program. You have parks in there, you have housing, you have historic, you have, I'm blanking on the rest, conservation, thank you, and the last one is planning. And you guys are, you guys are in there as well. So I think the idea is you try to get a cross-section of people from all the different, um, kinda buckets of this program. The other thing the town can do, if so choosing, we can add up to four citizens at large, right? So it can be five people on the committee, it can be nine people, seven, whatever we decide to do. I wanna make a distinction here. The CPC doesn't have any power to pass anything, right? They're kind of, like, the finance committee makes their recommendations, the CPC makes their recommendations at town meeting. They say, hey, we'd like to do this. If, if the people of Halifax like it and they wanna go for it, cool. If they don't, it gets shut down, the money stays in the bucket, it collects interest all year, and you circle back next year with a project that the town thinks is worth doing. And just to piggyback on what John said, the reason most towns do this program is the, the residents of Massachusetts pay real estate. Amy, I know you're a Realtor. So real estate transactions, deeds, titles, they collect money on all real estate transactions, put it aside for the CPA program. So that money's being collected by the state regardless, right? So unfortunately, it's been happening for about 24 years, we're late to the party, but I still think it's a, definitely a viable option, because again, you're leaving money on the table for things that, that, you know, could be used.
I would like to think that the more people we can get on that committee, the more bomb-proof we can make it, if that's the right phrase. Just because you see things with shorter boards, all it takes is a couple of people on that board with a similar agenda to outweigh some others, so I just...
I know there's a young handsome fellow on the planning board.
It's that salt and pepper down there. I'll let him pour you. I'll let him pour you.
If that would make you feel better, then I would say jump right on that.
I'll add, I'll add my two cents.
Joel and Mr. Sealy, maybe you can answer all that.
No, that's all I had. It's, I'm just a, I'm, I'm all for it. I love the, the concept of it. I just, unfortunately nowadays, people have agendas that aren't always in the best interest of the group. It's for themselves. And so I just want to make sure that we have some checks and balances in there, so that the people are actually represented. That's all.
All right, so we go in at, maybe one or both can answer it. We go in at one and a half percent, just, just for talking. From what I understand, we're locked into that rate for five years? Is that correct? And if the town votes or wants to vote, we can put it, we'd have to go to town meeting if it was either way, either decrease to one percent or increase to two, just for, for an example.
Yeah.
I just wanted, if my understanding was correct, is that right, John?
That's right.
It's not like you can slide it in and then, oh, let's, let's, all right, let's go to five percent, let's get, you know, the town would have to come back, go through this process again.
At town meeting?
At town meeting. The town would decide whether or not to...
So to your point, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be anything that, you know, lay it down all of a sudden, let's go up to three percent?
Yeah, I wasn't worried necessarily about that. I was actually more worried about how the funds are being allocated, right? I think also if there's gonna be a committee and there's gonna be a whole new set of bylaws that are added, I think that maybe there should be some stipulation in there that it can't go up more than 50 basis points, right? The fraction after the percentage, right? So if it's at 1.5, if any given year after the five years, if we increase it or decrease it, it can't be more than the next year being two, and then after that, 2.5, instead of doing these jumps from 1.5 to three. It's like, well, we're not, we've gotta put some kind of governor on this before it gets out of control, if we wanna get the public behind it.
I'm not sure what town did it, but they went from three percent down to one and a half percent, because they had so much money.
That was Kingston.
It was Kingston. They actually went down. And there was one community that has applied for this, has backed out of it, one community at all.
Yeah, there's a, there's a hundred and ninety, hundred and ninety-six. Hundred and ninety-six towns in the state. Seventy percent of the state are part of CPA. Not one town in the 24 years' history has voted to leave it.
Now, as far as checks and balances go, are the monies collected totals and whatnot, are they printed in the, in the town, uh, town vote?
It's all public.
As part of the, you know, the, the reward.
It'll be in your warrant, it'll be in your budget, it's all public.
So it would be monitored at?
So maybe I'll, maybe I'll change, amend my statement. Can go down at any percentage, but should be governed up by 50 basis points or something, just to...
But it still would have to be governed down also. It has to still go to town meeting?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I just mean, whether the...
Any change, okay.
I'm saying, whether it goes to the town or not, saying if we're at 1.5 for five years, and then after those five years, we're like, oh, we wanna bump it up. It's like, yeah, but we wrote bylaws five years ago when we got into this thing to assure the public that it's not, can't go up by more than a half a percentage at a time, so that it would kind of backdoor some safety net for the member, for the residents to say, we can't go from 1.5 to three. If we went from 1.5 to point five, we can go in any direction down, but we can't put people in a direction...
Wait a minute.
No, 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 at the, at the discretion of the people voting for, right? I just think, again, putting things in place so that we don't have to, six years from now, we have a big crap show of people enraged that this isn't what we all signed up for five years ago, just putting extra governors in there is never a bad thing, I think.
I guess too, what do you have for, like, say, a definition of affordable housing? Somebody comes in with a project and they have some units that are affordable housing, it still has to go to the board, it still has to be reviewed, and still has to be, so...
And if there's no money in there to do anything with, you can't approach anything that's too large.
But it's nothing that's automatic, I guess?
No.
Just to say, affordable housing and, hey, what kind of money does the town of Halifax have?
Exactly.
All right, good. Does anybody else have any other questions, or members of the board?
I do.
Tom?
Go ahead, Tom.
No, 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 go ahead.
No, go ahead, Tom.
No, no.
Go ahead.
I already forgot what my question was. That's why I'm trying to defer. I think you've covered, when we were talking about the percentages up, no matter what percentage is presented, it still has to clear town meeting anyway.
Correct. I will say to that point, Plimpton is one and a half percent, I believe, currently. They're, they're looking to go to three, because a lot of the community wants to, thinks it's a great program.
So does the, does the state match every penny for dime?
No, so, so what it is, Rick, as I said, it's connected to the real estate market, and I will admit, it's, it's been a tough market lately, so it fluctuates. So it fluctuates on how many deeds, how many titles are being sold.
Comes out of the tax stamp money.
Yeah, exactly. And it also, it also fluctuates on how many towns get into the program. Obviously, they have a pie, and the more towns that jump in...
So the towns that get in 24 years ago are a better...
Got a hundred percent. They got a hundred percent.
And they're stuck at a hundred percent?
They cleaned house for a long time.
So we, like, we're sitting late for the party.
Very late to the party. There are 13 towns right now that have CPA on the ballot this November, we are one of them. So, I mean, it goes to show you that a lot of communities in the state are, they're late to the game, but we're still trying to get along.
So that being said, the money is coming from surcharges that are costing the people who run businesses and live in the area more when they sell or buy a property, because now the surcharge is just actually a surcharge at the registry of deeds, above and beyond what the deed costs to be recorded. So you're getting the money from the people by surcharging businesses and people for selling their houses, and then that's where the fund comes from. And I would say that if 17 other towns get on, then that 20, 13, excuse me, I stand corrected, if the 13 other towns come on, then the 21% that went out this year could go down to as low as 5%, which is the lowest that it could be. And when we have residents in our town that are struggling to add a 1.5% on it is, is really not forever.
Sure.
I mean, we're all talking about how the, how our children can't afford to have housing. Well, why don't we just add to the taxes? It doesn't seem logical. And I would ask you, so are we doing, in the plans, are we trying to do the 100,000 dollars off of everybody's tax bill? Okay. And then we're also doing abatements as well, like, meaning on, that you cannot do. Right here, it says, in the law, it says the... I have it right here. Give me one second. It states that you can only do one. So that, you can only choose one way to give it. So you cannot do two different exemptions. You can't give 100,000 dollars off of everybody and do that. You can only choose one of the four ways, period, end of story. So you can't do that.
I'm, I'm not, I apologize. I'm not following what the other part is.
So you, there's four different ways that you can give people an exemption, and you're naming two, but you only have the choice of one.
One of the two. I'm listening to two, one of the two.
You can either give... They're not using the law, this is a sales pitch. There's no...
There was a screen that said what you're thinking.
But in the law...
So what she's saying, maybe just from another voice? What she's saying is, on the screen, it says 100,000 off of everyone, and people under here also get an abatement?
Correct.
She's saying the law says you have to pick one or the other.
All I can tell you is it's been submitted and vetted at the state level. Most, almost, almost every CPA community takes 100,000 dollars off of your assessed value, whether you're a property or a resident, in offer of these exemptions.
It stated it right in the law itself.
What law are we looking at?
We're looking at the one that we're looking at right now. There's a CPA law, it's called Chapter 44, and it's chapter three to seven, but this chapter, the, within that law, there are 17 different provisions. And we're not seeing it in writing, we're seeing things that are more on the front page, not the actual written law. The written law doesn't state these things.
Sure.
And that's where, and you have to go by the written law, not, not like, you know, what we see on a pamphlet. No offense.
No, no, not at all.
That's just the way it is. And then the other thing that this shows is the incomes are wrong, because in the 2024 incomes, there are totally different numbers. For instance, a median family home in 2024 with one person living in it, their low income is 45,550, and the extremely... And the extremely low is twenty-seven, three hundred and fifty. I think your numbers were somewhere in the vicinity of sixty-one and seventy-six.
With one person, yeah.
These are, again, I can tell you, these are from the state. We use the state numbers.
So is this, it's directly off of the state website from the law with the links right to it?
As far as exemptions go, you're saying that they can either pick the one hundred thousand or the income exemption? Well, if they qualify for the income exemption.
No, the town. The town can choose one of those ways to exempt people.
Again, we are using, we're using the exemptions that ninety-five percent of the other towns.
Where was coming from, Jonathan, I guess?
The Community Preservation Commission is a state agency that helps towns with their CPA process. So it's been vetted by the Attorney General. It's been vetted by the Community Preservation Coalition.
All the hundred thousand and the exemption.
So it's.
It states it right in the law.
I would hope that the AG knows that. That's what we used.
I'll send it right to you because it's right in the law.
Yeah, we can review that.
Also, if you do have funds and you're transferring year to year, you have to have them allocated to something, and you cannot deviate from what they are allocated to.
As far as which bucket it's in?
And that's for all of it. That's for all of it, not just the ten percents for the three different categories that are demanded, but the other money as well. It cannot ever deviate from what it is. And if we ever did try to vote to shut it down, say, for instance, we went for a dog park that has a ninety-nine-year lease, you cannot shut it down without keeping the residents paying for that for ninety-nine years. So even if we took it to have it revoked, you're still going to be charging all of the residents the taxes to keep everything that you have not, like say, for instance, you had spending that you were relying on the CPA funds all the way to ninety-nine years, your residents are now at, they have to pay for it.
So I would think if our Community Preservation Commission is worth anything, they probably wouldn't deed out a dog park for ninety-nine years, right?
Well, that's one of the, that's one of the things that's in the grant, is that it's a ninety-nine-year lease, and that you have to have people working there for ninety-nine years and all kinds of other things. So one of the things and the reason I got it is because one of your ideas is a dog park.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's why I brought it up.
Sure. So I would think whoever's on the Community Preservation Commission, and I don't want to speak for anybody on there, would consider.
Who's on there?
Nobody yet. It has to be voted.
Just making sure. Because you said the people on there.
They have to be from certain committees, right? Have to be on certain committees. Hopefully Brendan, I think Brendan is in excellent condition.
Hold on a second.
Yes.
Well, good to see everybody.
Open mouthed joint committee.
And you write the bylaws, you write the bylaws and figure out the things that you're talking about now. Within the bylaw committee, that knows what these things are supposed to do.
And they're going to be modest numbers to start. As I said, we're late. You know, we're not going to be talking millions of dollars. We're going to be talking projects around town that are going to need it, you know, with the basketball court gets brought up all the time. So projects like that, where the state has money set aside, and whether you think it's unfair or fair that they charge that tax on real estate, it's the game that we're forced to play, right? Until that changes at the state level, we can't, we're allowed to play by the rules that are handed down to us by the Commonwealth. And I know you have a hard time with that. I do. But I would like to see us take advantage.
We don't have to do the things that keep binding the people to more and more work because it's enslaving them longer. Not everybody makes a half million dollars a year.
And folks that are really truly hurting, that's why they put these exemptions in to help them.
That's not true either.
If you think about it, the folks that are exempt make out the best because they don't contribute anything to the CPA, yet they still get to.
That's not true either. It's an abated, it's abated. They do have to pay a certain amount too.
No, they don't.
It states it right in here.
I'd also like to think that with the.
It's an abatement. It's not a squatch.
Yeah.
If this moves forward, right? I would also like to think that in the bylaw committee and that we would have to put down, if we're going to spend the money, somebody's going to be paid to do the project. And I'd like to also assume that we would put something in there that says there's going to be an even amount of bids out there so that there's not some kind of favoritism.
No, no, no. It has to go through the bidding process.
I'm on the planning board. I own an excavating company or a tar company to redo the basketball court.
It has to go through standard town bidding process.
Yeah, okay. That would be important.
Tom or Rick, any questions, comments?
I just want to clear up on this exemption, some abatements things. You're just using that to calculate the amount of money, right? They're not actually getting an abatement.
Say that one more time.
If you're getting an abatement, where it says about income, well, not the income exemptions, but the abatements, is that just a figure to use to calculate the amount of money at one point five percent? Or you're actually giving people an abatement for a hundred thousand dollars?
They are getting abated from paying the fees.
If it's one of their chosen things.
If one of the.
So if your household income is below one of those numbers, you've, you get the abatement for that. It's not a hundred thousand. It's the eighty-eight dollars he was talking about.
When I was getting at was if we were actually getting physical abatements to everybody, we still have to raise that amount of money in taxes. So, you know, are you getting an abatement or are you not getting an abatement?
Right.
You're going to have to raise the rate to compensate if you're actually getting an actual abatement.
It's an additional payment. It has nothing to do with your tax payment. It is a separate payment, almost like your trash bill.
No, no, I understand the payment part of it, but when we start talking about abatements, if we're abating, you know, for instance, at fourteen twenty-eight, I think it was, the tax rate. If you're abating, say, everybody's tax bill a hundred thousand dollars, you're lowering the tax bill by fourteen.
No, that's just for the.
That's just for calculation. That's what I just wanted.
No, no, no. Unfortunately, not everybody's getting a hundred thousand dollars off their taxes.
I'll be on the committee.
No, that's, I'm glad you asked that, Tom.
That's the thrust of my question.
Strictly for math purposes to help, CPA came up with that formula to help people.
That's what I assumed. I just wanted to point out the difference because then we'd have to make that up to taxes.
Yeah, no, the CPA stipend would be in addition to, it would be a separate.
Yeah, it's on top of what you're going to pay for taxes anyway.
Bingo.
Just to calculate it, we're taking the hundred thousand dollars. I just wanted to clear that up because it sounded like everybody was getting a hundred thousand dollars.
No, I wish we could.
No, and that wouldn't work because you'd still have to raise the tax money.
And if they were actually going to get an abatement on the CPA, they have to apply for it every year. If they don't apply for it, then they will be charged the one point five percent that they're talking of now. So it would be more work for, like, say, an elderly person that doesn't know how to do that.
It doesn't go year to year.
So what can happen is, oh, sorry, I mean, I was just going to say, what can happen is, not everybody's salary stays the same year to year. You know, it can go up, it can go down. So to set one salary level and then be good forever, that's just not realistic. So that's why you have to do it every year.
And the property value is only, you've got to be assumed if you do a property evaluation, right? Like if you do, if you bring in an assessor to, what's the word I'm looking for? An appraisal. Appraisal, thank you. So like, well, we're on a recorded line, but some people don't always appraise their house all the time. They may be paying a little bit less if their house has gone up in value. So technically, to your point, I just wrote down when you said property value goes up, obviously, your one point five percent of that would go up.
Correct.
But if you haven't had your house appraised in the last four years, which I have, then you would have to, that's the only way that they would be able to, they're going to go based off of the record on.
Yeah, and it's market value. I mean, appraisal level fluctuates.
I just don't want somebody to come in and say, like, if my house is worth seven hundred thousand, and then they come in and go, well, we think it's worth a million because of what Zillow says.
No, no, no.
You're going to go off the assessor's.
Yeah, that's what I say. The assessors, okay, all right, okay. Stupid question.
Any questions, Rick, or anything like that? Any comments you'd like to make?
I'm sorry, I couldn't.
Anyone else?
The assessors do go off sales price, correct?
Yeah, well, they adjust, it's mass appraisal, so it's, it isn't exactly what the house might actually sell for. There's a sort of a scale there that they have to come within ten percent over or under of what market value might be. So, I mean, they're not, again, it's mass appraisal, it isn't individual appraisal. So it gets a little tricky, but it's generally lower than the market value.
And if the board doesn't mind, if I could bring up, one thing I'm seeing in social media is folks are saying that if Halifax, we have the three A zoning issue that's coming up in December, and then if Halifax does not come in compliance with MBTA, we don't get CPA money.
Right.
That is not the case. They are completely separate. They are not tied to each other. So I don't want folks thinking that.
They have to vote that.
They have to vote one way or the other on each of them. They have two separate, two separate issues. They can vote separately.
Have you seen the scoring that they do to make it so that your town, like, so are you sure that it's not in the scoring? Because, you know, in the second section, when they fund, if they have any more money, they have a scoring. So have you seen what they score by, or are you just?
No, I emailed the state just to double check this morning, and I can forward you the email from the state that says the three A zoning issue and CPA funds are not tied in any way. Because honestly, I had that same concern myself.
So have you seen section seventeen of the law then that states the Commissioner of Revenue shall have the authority to promulgate rules and regulations to the effect and the purposes of this chapter?
I have.
So that means that they can change this whenever they want.
As I said, we're tied.
It's an ever-changing law, again.
We're tied to the rules of the game.
Which isn't within your rights.
We need if you vote for it.
Correct.
Right. That's exactly what.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Shea?
No, I don't have anything. Fred did.
We could open up to some questions. Sure, Fred, what would you like? Your name and address, please?
Fred Corrigan from Rosewood Drive. John, a quick question. Thank you very much for the presentation, by the way. Living in the Halifax Mobile Home Estates where there's some four hundred and thirty-seven units, however, my understanding is that we're taxed as an entity, right? How does that homeowner who is low income qualify for not having, because every home in there, all four hundred and thirty-seven of them are going to get jacked, eighty-eight dollars a year, I would believe? And now how does that homeowner, because we're going to be paying it because they will up our rent or I feed whatever you want to call it, so how do we get from not having to pay? I mean, if we're living on Social Security, we're sure then they're not making sixty thousand dollars a year. Not unless I'm in the wrong country. Okay? So I'm not sure how to answer that question, but how is that being addressed?
How would that be affected?
Sure. So I will say, my heart dropped out of my stomach when I had that exact same thought that Fred had because I would never get behind a program where low-income folks are not eligible for this, right? The bad news is, Fred, because Halifax Estates pays one tax bill, they are corporations. They are not eligible for low-income housing abatement. That's the bad news. The good news is, when you do the math, when you subtract the one hundred thousand from your assessed property values, you go through the whole thing, you come up with a number, you divide by four hundred and thirty-nine units, the annual contribution for folks at Halifax Estates is five dollars and sixty cents.
Okay, that's a good answer.
Which I think is a win-win for the town because the town is able to create funding and not kill the resident in Halifax Estates.
So if they raise on what they rent by twenty bucks, we're going after the chairman.
There you go. So.
Didn't they just raise you guys twenty or thirty dollars a month already?
They have a new rate just coming up, yeah. I think it's twenty bucks. It's kind of increased by. But that's led to, I think, utilities or maintenance or something else in there that they're tying that to, not to this program.
So on a budget like yours, five dollars might mean quite a bit.
Yep, oh, yes.
Yes, I'll take the phone off. Yes, your name and address, please?
Karen Fader, sixty-six Clidell Bosworth Road. I have a couple of questions. So the first question is, businesses don't get any exemption. Hundred thousand dollars is off the board for any businesses, correct?
Everyone gets the hundred thousand dollars.
But not businesses. It says right in the state law.
Again, I'll share with you, Karen, what we've put forward, but it's a hundred thousand dollar.
Right off their website. It says businesses do not qualify for the hundred thousand dollars.
Wait, now, when you say business, you mean commercial?
Commercial.
Commercial.
Commercial pay into this as well.
Okay. I didn't know you meant the business itself.
No, any business that comes into town, I mean, if we're lacking business, if we have no business, our taxes would, you know, be lower because we'd have more income from that. So that's concerning to me, number one, is that you wouldn't be getting that, and then businesses aren't going to want to come here if they have to pay an extra fee that they don't have to pay somewhere else.
That's if the business owner owns the building. Because it's being assessed by.
Someone owns the building.
Right. But like, I think about the, I think about the place where Rodney's kitchen is. That guy owns that whole thing, but the seven businesses that are in there, or how many are in there now? Fifteen? No. The seven businesses that are in there, whatever, those business owners aren't going to be taxed.
It would be under a corporation. It wouldn't be under someone's personal name.
The business corp, the business.
If it's a corporation, you're not going to qualify. Yeah. So you're still not going to qualify.
No, I get it. I'm just saying, yeah, okay.
The other thing is that if the town decides, you know, a year after this was implemented, that they want to get out of it, it's five years minimum, and as Amy stated previously, to get out of it, and you have to pay back the money.
No, 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 you don't have to pay back the money.
It says five, minimum five years, and repay that.
You would repay anything that's still open, right? So if we're drawing off CPA, that's the other thing. If you have a project you would really like to do, you can draw off CPA, right? And we don't have enough money in our CPA account, but we want to do this project. So we can set up a bond and draw off a CPA. If you have an open bond and decide to pull out while that bond is still open, yes, you would be on the hook to make the extra payments for that. Again.
It'd still be on a hook for payments for a minimum of five years, residents.
I'm not, for the CPA program to be part of the program for five years?
Yeah, and not get out of it or change it.
It is a five-year commitment, and then after that is whatever the town would like to do. Again, twenty-four years, a hundred and ninety-six communities, not one town is.
So Jonathan, is it in five-year increments, or is it just five years for the first buy?
And then game on.
And you could go six and below, or seven below. But we're on the hook for, like you said, for five years.
I would say people are hurting right now. People can't, what else?
It's, I would think that.
People that have it, you have to pay for the have-nots.
It would take five years for an accumulation of enough wealth to really make a big, big difference. It's just probably why they're doing it. I think, give it a, give it us some time.
Sure, sure. And I can see the town maybe holding onto it for a while to, you know, get enough money to do something, you know, doing a project that really means something, so.
Yes, sir, in the back there you handed earlier. Your name and address, please?
Tom McAlister, Luther Street. This adds to the two point five percent annual tax increase. I targeted, right, to, probably put this up a four percent increase.
No, it's not to the tax rate, it's to your payment. It's one and a half percent to your tax payment, not your overall tax rate. It doesn't affect the tax rate.
The one and a half percent, correct?
Yeah.
And proposition two and a half is two point five percent, right?
Correct.
That's the most the town's supposed to increase taxes based on town meeting and all that, many extras. We're trying to hold to that two and a half percent.
Yeah.
So now you're adding another one and a half percent to that.
Around your one.
You're at four percent.
No, no, exactly, no. Not exactly. It's one and a half percent of your tax bill.
Correct.
So your tax bill is one and a half percent of that, the two and a half percent is of.
Right.
Right, so I divide that by three hundred and sixty-five. Still one and a half percent.
Not the way the math goes. So it's, again, I don't want, I can share with you after if you'd like, but it's one and a half percent of your payment, not of your assessed value. You know what I'm saying? Not of your overall tax bill.
Right. But you're just going by certain figures right now. That's why you don't even have a true figure if it's only going to be eighty-eight dollars.
No, that's, and it is the, it's based on the average assessed value of the home. If your home is assessed less than that, your payment will be less. If your home is assessed more, it will be more.
No, that's based on five hundred thousand dollar house and take the hundred thousand dollars off. You can put the one and a half percent on that tax, and that comes to eighty-eight.
Not the tax itself.
No. It's a, an amendment.
Are you saying it's going to be costing you more? Is that what you're trying to say, Mr. McAlister?
Of course it is.
Yeah, so are you saying that's tough? Is that like what your overall, I mean, without getting into the intricacies, your message is?
Right, well, you add two and a half percent regardless on taxes.
So, um, so one thing I'll say is that what's in front of you is whether the modifications that are shown on these plans are problematic compared with the plans that you previously approved. So that's kind of the question. Are these things substantially changed and do you have any issues with them? So recognizing that you brought up kind of the status of...
Do we have a plan?
You're telling me that you're looking now for the plan after I've submitted it three weeks ago?
Um, in the file right here and I'm...
Yes, they were submitted.
We don't have a plan here.
Yeah.
These are submitted from August 1st.
But do we have anything over there?
So, three weeks ago, we don't have a plan?
Yeah, the, no, the, uh... Can I see the plans?
Um, the plan right here, yeah.
Yeah.
The plan right here is from August 1st.
Yep.
So you didn't send that out in three weeks ago is my point.
August 1st.
No, I'm not saying it's your fault, not that it's not right here.
Does it have a revised date on it?
But that's when he sent it to us, it's the letter on it.
Okay, so, this is one we said, August 1st. Okay, yeah, those are the correct plans. We didn't submit them to you until they were dated, they dated a certain date, but then we submitted to you, them to you after that date.
So August 1st, so you didn't do any changes to it after August 1st?
Right.
So even though the Board of Health gave us more elevation, just two weeks ago tops, we don't have plans showing up?
No, those were, those weren't submitted to the Board of Health two weeks ago.
Because the change was asked for, I believe, this month, this past month.
I think she's referring to the six inch.
This is actually 265 anyways.
Yeah.
Is this where the 266 one?
Um, I don't know.
These, this is the 266, so it's just what she's referring to. Uh, these are draft, yeah, these are draft conditions.
Yeah, stormwater conservation.
This is even 266.
Yeah.
What are the plans in the right folder?
And these are 285 and those are, um...
Do we have a folder?
9524, we have a letter. Um...
Bingo. The one that says per Board of Health comments.
Over the last...
So, per Board of Health comments.
But Board of Health comments were changed in the beginning of this month.
Those are the correct plans. That's what I'm asking you to vote on. You have the plans. You've had the plans. You've talked to your peer reviewer as to and gotten confirmation that the changes are de minimis and ask them to approve those plans in front of you.
Actually, the last plan that PGV has seen is July 9, 2024, and I have that in writing. We do not have a PGV review of anything past July 9.
Yes, we do.
No, we don't. He's not given a plan by having it in writing.
It is right here in writing.
That's where Alan Diaz, that's not from PGV.
Can you hold on a minute? I do have one right here from, uh...
I'll just say, these changes are so minor, it doesn't require any expertise to evaluate them. This is de minimis.
On Thursday, September 5th, 2024, at 10:48 a.m., that the Board of Health approved their portion of the sun elevation changes, should you review that. Mr., uh, Mr. Brennan said, I took inspection sections of the stormwater management bylaw, added some inspections, made some minor changes, cashes the document which should be included as conditions. This would be appropriate for both 265 and 266. And just to follow up, there is, uh, he agrees that there would be, where was his other letter?
The elevation changes would not impact the stormwater.
There it is, right there.
Says everything on the pavement is being captured and the runoff from the grass over the septic fields is less than existing conditions, no matter which way it flows, Thursday, September 5th.
September 5th. Is that, that's a referent. So, and again, the, uh, the letter, as long as we're on the subject, the letter here from, uh, from Mr., the Chairman of, uh, of Conservation Commission, Mr. Diaz, who's sitting right over there, uh, should also be included into the file. I could read it into the record if you like, but, uh, bottom line, just to summarize, I as the Chair did not address the elevation changes because there would be no impact on the site increase runoff to adjacent properties. On September 5th, 2024, I contacted Patrick Brennan regarding the increase in elevation based on the Board of Health approval. The only elevation increases were over the septic sys, septic system and that area was grass. So all of those areas have been addressed. Uh, Mr. Diaz, as long as you're here, I'll, I'll ask you if you have any comments or problems or issues that you felt.
No, Alan Diaz, Chairman of Conservation Commission, we reviewed the plan very extensively. Thondike has taken some of our suggestions, put them into place regarding the stormwater management and regarding, uh, siltation barriers around the property, they made some drainage changes on the entranceway and throughout the system. We reviewed all the plans, we found that all the calculations were correct, they were all, um, approved by Pat Brennan, okay? He answered a lot of questions that the Commission had and we are very comfortable with the plan's stance. We were comfortable before, this minor elevation, honestly, I don't know that it's six inches or not, has no impact on any of the drainage.
So that, well, actually, it was, it was stated that you specifically said you had a concern about the runoff with the increase.
Okay, let me address that. I did have the opportunity to watch the planning board meeting and I'm just gonna tell you quite frankly that Mr. Drew lied about all the comments you made. I never made a comment at the planning board meeting relative to elevation changes. I never made any comments that I or the Board had any concern with elevation changes. That did not happen at all.
So suppose Conservation's Commission's concern with Mr. Brennan's presentation is his investigations, his thorough review of the plan, Conservation signed off on it, Board of Health signed off on it, and you're, and correct me if I'm wrong, now I'm on the boards anymore, but your Board is all set with it?
My Board has approved the plan and the only thing we're waiting on is a special order of conditions, which I have in draft form. And those orders went out to town council to review, so I suspect that early next week that I'll have that draft approved and my Board will be signing that as soon as it's ready.
Great, thank you, sir. All right, so bottom line, what we have is as of, uh, July, July 11th, on 266, we, uh, we voted to approve the, uh, site plan. It was, uh, it was passed Florida law and, uh, then we put conditions on it until we heard, you know, uh...
Yep.
Let's just make everything clear and bring everything up. And to me, everything's been addressed, Board of Health, Conservation Commission. Uh, I just, uh, we already voted on it, so it, I'd suggest that we, uh, we sign off on it tonight unless somebody has, uh, another motion or something they'd like to make on it, but, uh, I think we should get it done.
I'm gonna read Pat Brennan's letter into, um, into, into record and it is from today. Um, and he says that the last plan that I looked at was revised, 72924, I did not submit a letter on the revised plan, um, because the revisions did not impact stormwater. My last letter was 7924 based on 7824 plan. Alan Diaz did contact me on 95 about the Board of Health approving the plan with some elevation changes above the septic legionary. I explained that the elevation changes over the septic field would have no impact on the stormwater, there was no increase on the septic area and the area over the septic field is proposed to be graded the same as 782024 plan that I reviewed. I do not know what variance is the Board of Health granted for the septic system. So, um, basically what, um, I have a question for is, can you tell me, um, in your stormwater management plan, Alan, is there a, any, any, um, water coming off of the property?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Again, the entire parcel, although it's very small, contains all of the rainwater and everything that comes out of the sky will be contained on that parcel of property. We made some adjustments on the siltation sock so that during construction, if we have a heavy rain, heavy rain event, snow melting, that the sock instead of being 12 inches would be 18 inches and they are required to maintain that and there's gonna be weekly inspections. So based on the experience, reviewing all the plans, there'll be no runoff from 266 going on to adjacent properties.
Okay, so further back, you stated that there was gonna be some water coming off of the grass area, um, in the back, that, that all had always been there and that, um, you had a concern about it. Do you recall that?
When was that?
Mr. Chair, during our conversations with Thondike, some of the questions were, because of the grading that's currently existing and this comment was brought up by Anabata, he was concerned that any affluent would run into his property. After doing a site visit, we've established that there's no impact on any of ours from stormwater damage. That was a concern, it was raised, it was addressed by Thondike, we reviewed it, we're okay with it.
So all of the water off the grass area will not, there will be nothing that'll leach him off?
No, if you, if you look at the plan and read the plan, you'll find at the toe of the slope, that the elevation goes up. So I'm gonna say that based on the plan, your, your answer is no.
Does this have the correct elevation plans on it that have been adjusted since the beginning of this month?
They haven't been adjusted this month. We've just been in process with three different boards. So these are the latest plans, there are no other plans that exist for 266-1 Ponset. And honestly, these are the ones I'm asking you to approve. That's, that's the question in front of the Board.
I'm asking you a question, I understand what you want, but I have every right to ask.
There are no further plans.
So the, the six inches that the Board of Health just made you go up, they're on this plan?
This was revised on 729 per Board of Health review comments. One of those comments was actually, uh, one of those comments was related to, uh, amounting analysis and that's what drove raising of the grade. So these reflect the grades that the Board of Health approved, these are the same.
On 94.
Yeah. Yeah, so just because they approved it on 94, trust me, there's a gap between submission and approval.
I'm asking the question because that's my job, sir.
That's now.
I don't work for you, I work for the people of the town of Palopas.
Okay, uh...
Do you, do you want a motion to reaffirm our vote?
If you'd like to, sure.
I'd like to make a motion to reaffirm our previous vote and now accept the plan as presented and pass it and be done with this thing.
Do we take comments from the public on this?
Do I have, there's a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
A second.
Is the motion and a, and a second on the floor, any other further discussion for members of the Board? Okay, uh, I'll ask for a voice vote. Uh, it's not down opposite. Rick?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Amy?
No.
Brendan?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Pass this for me.
Thank you very much.
Okay, though, what we need to, uh, sign off on that on, uh, actually sign off the plan?
Really, really just, uh, it's issuance of a letter that references, references this date.
Okay, fine.
You, you signed, uh, as representative on the original site.
Yeah, I think so.
That'll work with us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, people are all set?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Uh, the next one, 24-SPR244, Arnold of Vera, the site plan review application from MAP 73 lot 7A plan. Oh, there he is.
Don't worry, we're the engineering. We did submit plans to the historical society of, and we did get answers back from John, uh, that basically the only thing that, that they suggested is that we clavow all sides. And so we said, as far as he's concerned, our next step would be justified with the building, building inspector.
Okay, so where were we on that as far as, uh, any questions, Mr. Joe from the Board?
Still needed to do documentation to the historical Board, right?
That's what he was just talking about.
Yeah. We had to go to them and we talked, and I talked to John again tonight and he said, no, just tell them that you're, you're all set with us, just go to the building inspector.
No, I actually heard what he said and what he stated was that you had to give him more than the outside sketch.
Right, but at the building, yeah, we have to submit a whole set of plans to the building, to the building inspector and then he will be forwarding them, be reviewing them at the building inspectors.
But as far as windows in the outside side, is just a little bit of clavwards?
We don't have a whole set of architectural, so we have to create that. Well, he wanted to see if this is what the outside was gonna look.
No, he said that he needed more than what you had provided.
He, he said, well, the answer is yes, we, we have to submit a whole set of architectural, yes.
To historical?
But he's, but he's stated, you heard him, that I, we, my next step is to go to the building inspector with a set of plans.
Okay, but we're, we're, we're gonna be able to see them, correct?
I would assume so, yeah.
And is part of this process?
It's part of the process.
Like we'll get word from him? I thought you meant that we were not gonna be able to be part of that.
Oh, no, no, I just, um, I, I think this is the last link in the chain. Other than that, uh, we have a lot of other groups.
So you're in the works. How we set the time?
Um, I have that right here. We have Arnold, where, October 9th, um, October 9th, so we'll need an extension. Do you think 30 days will be plenty? So it would bring us to November 8th.
Yeah, 'cause the last two times or three times, you couldn't get an appointment with this story.
Yeah, 'cause you just had your first meeting with him too, last night?
Well, we had it three weeks ago, where I submitted everything to Jeff.
Well, the meeting was last night though, yeah.
Just a million...
I just wanna clarify, what are we waiting for?
Historical.
No, I understand. We're waiting to present us with a set of plans or we gonna be included in the building inspector's routing program? I just wanna be sure about why we're extending this, what we're doing or what we are to expect here.
Oh, so that we don't lose site, site plan from October 9th?
No, I understand. Just trying to establish what we're still looking for.
As far as documentation, site plans?
Right, to, to, to act on the, uh, on the site plan.
Um, all of the documents from historical so that we can see what's, what's going on?
Maybe a letter from, from historical?
I will see what John said, yeah, I mean...
Yeah, that's, that's what I was just trying to clarify.
But then, like, so that we can see all the approved plans so that we can make a site plan, um, vote on the site plan based on the entire plan.
Well, if I understand it correctly, the only, the only final site plan would just was clavwards is what you, unless you have a, a letter from him that says the exterior will include clavwards and whatever else?
Well, I'm a little confused at, at what you and I heard tonight with John. He explicitly said your next stop is the building inspector. Well, so I don't, I don't know, I'm confused.
Yeah, well, that's why I'm trying to clarify what we're doing here.
Well, that's why we need it in writing from the boards, it's like, 'cause then everybody can tell you one thing or the other, but we need it in writing for the file.
I think you need a letter from John stating that the historical is satisfied with these additions to, you do have an exterior rendition, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so you're gonna add clavwards to the exterior rendition and that should...
I would say run that by the building inspector come on next meeting and we'll...
Yeah, the building inspector isn't gonna care whether it's clavwood.
Right, well...
He's, doesn't care one way or the other. Not that I'm...
Okay, so...
We need an extension, so you'll give us an extension from October 9th to, uh, to November 8th?
That's fine, yes.
I was broken.
So I'll make a motion to have an extension on site plan 24 SPR244 from October 9th, giving 30 days to November 8th.
Is the motion on the floor, do I have a second?
I'll second, yeah.
It's a motion and a second to approve the, uh, the extension. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Rick? Aye.
Aye.
Your name is?
You might wanna have whoever did the rendition just draw some clavwards in here.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just, uh, yeah, thanks.
Can't see, can't see with the law, can't see with the law.
You got it?
Have a good night.
Thanks, Joe. All right, do we need to, eventually sign that?
Yeah, I'm just continuing to write it out, so if you wanna move on to the next thing, I'll finish this.
Cool, we'll go to our next, uh, appointment, which is 285 Home Street, PSPR24-1, site plan review application. Where are we? Hi, how are you?
Hi, I'm very well, thank you. I'm Ann Swobuleski, attorney for the applicant. Um, we had hoped to have our updated plans submitted today, but it did not work out. So our engineer, um, took the review comments on the stormwater design from the town's review engineer, he revised them.
That was at Conservation?
That was from Conservation, yes. He spoke with the review engineer after he revised them to make sure he was on the right track. He revised the plans, he has a letter explaining the comments and we've also included, um, a row of arboridae trees to provide some, some additional screening. We had, after your suggestion, at the last meeting, I reached out to Mr. Mary, we offered to go on the property to see where we should plant the trees. He wasn't, he thought that it wouldn't be worthwhile to go, for us to go onto his property and look from his property to our site. So what we've done instead is we've gone from our property to look at his property and see where we can identify where you could see a building through the existing vegetation and cite the landscape screening plan exactly. So those are shown also on the plans. And I've got a little narrative that explains, we've got, they're gonna be, uh, the good green giant arboridae, which grow to 40 feet, they grow about 10 feet a year, it's recommended place them at an eight foot spacing, so we're showing those on the plan. Um, and, but as I said, I had hoped to come with them for, for you, but they're, they're not done. So we're gonna submit those on Monday and the engineer did ask me specifically to, to clarify how many hard copies you guys would like of his updated plans. So that we submit them.
Yeah, we, we, I, what is that, well, it says five copies, by the way.
So we're not, I don't have to recuse, we're not discussing anything in this room?
I'm sorry?
We're discussing in this, do I have to recuse from this or?
No, no, there won't be any discussion. Yeah, I'm just, I, we don't have this up to the plans, I just wanted to give you guys an update.
We're good with dates in terms of...
Yeah, I was just gonna say, how many dates?
I think we continued, um, until November, yeah.
Okay, so we got this...
Like, I feel like it was like the 19th or something like that. It was, 18. The 19th. So if we, if we file on Monday, we'll file with both you and Conservation. Um, we're on the agenda for Conservation for Tuesday, but I don't know if that's enough time for them to substantively actually review what we've submitted, so we'll probably, and not to speak for Conservation, but we'll probably not have a substantive decision from them on Tuesday.
So if we were discussing anything like that, but I'm, just was concerned, we were talking last time of doing some drive bys and whatnot, there is additional equipment, signs and whatnot being brought onto the property, is that permanent or just a temporary thing? I mean, as of yesterday, day before?
I'm not aware of that, but I will look into it.
I'd appreciate it, thank you. All right.
So we're good?
We have somebody in the public?
For?
And I did.
Well, we're not really discussing, 'cause we got no plan.
Yeah, we don't have anything to look, Fred, go ahead, why not?
Just one, one quick question on her comments on the giant arboridae. She stated that they grow 10 feet a year, they grow three feet a year, just to be correct on giant arboridae.
Thanks, Fred. Good. All right, let's do, uh, I'm sorry? Oh, uh, let's do some minutes, what do we have?
We have, um, one more thing here, Autumn Lane, Cody Rolland.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you there. Sorry, he's snuck in.
And, and...
Autumn, Autumn Lane, yes.
And so I'm Cody Rolland, um, we are here with the Rendells here, um, to talk about, or to ask about seven Autumn Lane, who, um, are in the process, they're in the process of purchasing this property, but there seems to be, um, we don't know for sure what the town is going to require to release the lot, the, the developer has been somewhat vague, we don't really understand exactly what needs to be done, so we're hoping to clarify exactly what needs to happen.
So will you cover owner?
No, I am the agent representing these guys, sorry. They're trying to buy the property.
Pretend not to be trying to buy the property.
Yeah.
The property is one of those never ending sagas.
That's what we're trying to ascertain, exactly. So that's what we're trying to ascertain, like what, we'll complete the saga for this particular development and then maybe we can work it out with the developer to complete it, whatever needs to be done.
I think one of the things, as I recall, and memory doesn't serve me well much anymore, the top coat?
On the street?
Was not put down.
Okay, what, is there any, I guess, is there, that's what I was hoping to figure out here, like what, what still needs to be done so the lot could be released, that's really it.
Probably have to refer to the highway sever. I know he's got some notes, I'm sure he still doesn't, mentioned before.
Yeah, they, the last time we went through this, we tried to get a PR engineer on the street so that we had, um, what needed to be done correctly and get a proper...
So can Steve have it too?
Do we still, do we still have any money in the, in the review account there?
Uh, I would have, that would have to be a question that we would ask.
Check the treasury, yeah.
So we should probably do that.
Just, just to see if there's any money in there to utilize.
But, um, yeah, uh, we would have to look into, like, exactly what needs to be done so that she could have a quote so that they could do it.
And, and do we even know who the developer is?
Could it just be the top coat or could there be other conditions?
It could be other conditions of the plan.
I think there's no...
What about the lot itself? Is, is that the one that goes?
Like a, big, it's a big hole to the Grand Canyon.
We, we do have a...
Goes down, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It's kinda open up, patient could go right out.
That's another issue altogether.
Yeah, no, we were gonna, maybe discuss, um, plans, but I think the more important thing is...
See what, what's...
We're just trying to find out, should we walk away from this, you know?
I'd like to tell you, this is the only lot in town we have this situation.
I suspect, yeah. Yeah, and actually...
You said you wish you could say that, or?
I wish I could say it was the only one.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I was gonna say, I think, I think it like this too more.
Maybe we could fix this one anyway, make it go away.
So maybe what you could do is call an engineer and find out what needs to be done to, um, complete the road to a town standard, right?
I think the first place to start, if we, let me, is who owns it now? Does Green Developments still own?
Yeah, it's, yeah, uh...
I think it was Green, I, I may have that wrong.
Well, where's my notes? Uh, Jake Development?
Okay, that's different than the original.
So it's, it's done, uh, Tre, Treany, I don't know.
Treany?
Treany.
Yeah, okay, that, that name rings a bell.
Yeah.
Probably start with them, have you spoken to them?
We have, yes.
And you was, if they said, I'm sure.
And, and his, his wife slash agent said, um, basically, let us know what the planning board wants and we will do it. So, we are...
The easy, the easy answer is the completion of the original road plan.
But is, is it just the, I, I mean...
We don't know.
We don't know, so how does it look out?
Was this the meeting where we, uh...
No, no.
Where they came in and we talked about, um, sidewalks and then electrical underneath? No, I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about pasture. Hold on, let me finish. There was a, there was a conversation that we had that was, the developer I thought was in here and talking about putting the electrical and moving the fire hydrant. Is this the same development that we're talking about where he didn't wanna put a fire hydrant within a certain depth or change of, it was changing the...
That's off on Haywood.
How far the, the development was going. Remember that, remember we had that original site plan for, for a new development, it was so far back and they wanted to cut it half basically?
Yeah, that's-
It's just, this is another, like, um, Delia Way and Paschaleen deal.
Oh, yeah.
This one's been developed for quite some time.
Unfortunately, they all mesh together.
That's short.
Developers not finishing their projects.
The last, the last time he was here, and the minutes where he talked about, um, a wood guard rail instead of a steel guard rail.
Oh, okay.
And then after that, there were several, uh, there were many, um, he would get on the agenda but not show up.
Got it, yeah, got it.
That, that's typical.
Yeah, so, we're just trying to figure out-
We had a little pocket in the history of Halifax of developers developing eighty-five percent of the development, and then bailing on the last fifty percent, leaving everybody that they sold houses to?
We, we should, we should probably investigate to see who the last review engineer that we had, that the planning board had, and see if there's any notes that, or any contact with that engineer to see what, the last thing they left it with.
Where would they find that, Tom, would they find that at the, uh?
Here's, here's the really good-
Department with Steve Haywood?
He might have some of that, but we also could check with the treasurer's office to see if whatever bond money was put up, or whether it was an actual bond or cash or whatever.
It might have been the lot.
I think it's the lot.
It's the lot, yeah.
Here's the good news.
But, but for review engineers.
You know how you have motivated sellers? You have a very motivated board to get this off of our agenda.
That would be amazing.
So-
Can you take it and buy it from you?
We're very motivated. So whatever that means.
So, outside, assuming that the, you guys aren't holding any money, and it is just the lot, I know that, I'm, I'm Marshall, they do that sometimes, um, what do we do then?
Well, well, my point was, we might have some money set aside for review engineering. We may have used it all up, we might not have used it all up, but at least we might be able to track who the review engineer was.
And get that plan to start from.
At least ask for some feedback, uh, and give you some kind of direction.
Now, would he have, would he have the plan?
The engineer would.
The engineer probably would, yeah.
Yeah, the first engineer would.
If, if they still have it.
He was supposed to be contacting him, uh, back in December.
We can find out who that is.
And we get that, and we can, you know, we'll, we can shepherd it, he, it, we're here, we'll shepherd anything you want, we can get it, so.
And I'm just trying to think it out and see what the blame does.
Yeah, no, whatever suggestions you guys have.
My biggest suggestion in my time here, and I know I'm not the most tenuous person here, but in my experience, is just when you think someone else is gonna do their job, just the fault is you doing it. And then we might actually get it done, so that's what I would suggest in this, so we can get this through.
So, it could be in the planning board folder, um, the, anything on that, on that road, as far as like a PR review on the road, should be in that. That's why I keep saying, all these documents need to be in our planning board folder, so that when things like this happen, people go to the planning board office, and they're like, oh, on the conservation said this, and, oh, the, uh, board health said this, and, oh, this PR engineer said this.
Well, the, the planning board office downstairs, Danielle is there, I don't know if they had a conversation with her, she would be there right beside her as the building inspector, so there, there may be
I believe we just went and talked to them at one point.
I, I talked to her, and she said I had to put time on the agenda to come to talk to you, and, so I don't know if you can tell her that she can talk to us, I don't know.
The plans have been moved so many times, the, that, that becomes complicated too, but that, that's gonna take some effort to search them up.
Just to save this guy's shoulder, he seems to have, yes, sir.
Well, I, I've noticed over the years, it's not much, Phil McAllister with the street, and contractors come and go, night and day, and there should be major bonds put on any decisions to make sure that they're gonna adhere to what you guys say.
Couldn't agree with you more.
Yeah, this has been a big movement over the last few years for us.
Yeah, and, and it goes back twenty, thirty years, back in some of the other towns, they put in major developments, they put in the, started the sidewalks, didn't complete them, put the first coat on the road, and walked away.
And it's cheap to let the lot go that they're holding, whatever it is for the map, to do the roads, or do the, do the roads.
That's the, uh, problem.
The prob, the problem goes back to the planning boards at the time when they started taking lots in lieu of bonds. And, and typically, if you're gonna do that, you take one of the better lots. You don't take the worst lot, you know, the one that needs the most amount of work.
We live in Halifax, we live on Lampo's Drive, and that's one of those, that, and it was down at the back where the swamp land, and that's what this one is, there's the wetlands running right through it. 'Cause that's my next question, is even if we can get this, I don't know if anybody here could, I, I don't remember, I don't know the rules of it, but most of the property, can we develop in the fifty, in, in the fifty-foot buffer zone?
No.
So you can't-
You have to stay outside the fifty.
Both buffer zones, right?
Right.
You can't develop in either one, there's like a fifty, there are two fifties to make the hundred, so you can't develop in the hundred? Then I don't want the lot, 'cause it's-
When you say two fifties, where, wherever you-
What, this front setback and the wetland setback?
Off the back. Yeah, the front setback's fifty, fifty feet, right?
Yeah, so this is, this is where the wetlands come through, this is fifty, and then this is the full hundred.
And that's their goal.
So you can see, if, if I can't develop in here, then there's nothing left in the property.
Yeah, this is your fifty-foot setback, so that there wasn't a flat part.
Yeah, and there's fifty, that's, this is the fifty, the fifty-foot setback.
Nothing good.
This is the, this is the wetlands coming through, so if I have the fifty-foot setback, and I can't get into any of this, then this is all I have, and this is, this is the, this is coming in from this side.
Yeah.
So that's the buildable property.
Oh, I remember that part, though.
And if that's the case, I hope you guys can get your money back, I-
Well, we don't have any money.
You're not gonna get it from me.
No, it was just, who gets hurt is the rest of the people in the subdivision.
I know that sometimes you can get through the conserva, but I don't know if that's-
Is that how you're gonna do the site?
Well, there's a, there's, there's fifty, there's a hundred, you know, you can work inside the fifty.
Okay, well, that, that was my question, so that-
The hundred.
No, the fifty- Yeah, but I mean, we, it's fifty feet excluded completely, there's no touch.
Right, you mean, like, within the hundred of the wetlands?
The first fifty.
So you said fifty, I just wanted to make sure.
No, 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 I, I was, yeah, I was pointing, so it made it easier.
That was my understanding when I looked at it, is that this was possible, this is not possible.
Correct.
This is possible, but you get conservation approval?
Yeah, you're gonna have to file.
Right.
Because you're within the hundred, anything within the hundred feet is gonna be, you know, filed.
But I couldn't come in here, so this is all I'm dealing with, so it would be, to build a house, the house would have to fit in, in here somehow.
Yeah, inside?
Inside this.
Yeah, right.
Right.
Inside this.
Yeah, so-
Because it's double thirty out, right there?
So it would be-
Yeah, that, that's a hundred, that's fifty.
So it, it would be anywhere in here, like, anywhere in here.
Thirty on the side setback.
But it's not a guarantee on that fifty.
But like, this doesn't show how the frontage is from the heart, that's just the circle.
They'll probably make you-
So I was meaning wherever the, is thirty from the side, fifty from the heart.
Evaluating, and you're probably gonna have to do another delineation, because it's so old, and things change over the course of time, and so that's the line they're gonna use. And then, then you figure out what you got left, but you can work inside that fifty.
Yeah, okay.
But to his point, Bruce, if you have to have it re delineate, you might lose some of that land, too.
It may be different.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we can at least try on this end to come up with whatever we can come up with for it.
I mean, if we can look into that, how big a deal it is and all that, eventually, we may just say, forget it, but, um, you know, we're willing to try to, to do it.
We'll, we'll let Danielle know that, uh, you'll be heading down there to see what you can research in the, uh, in the files that was, uh-
And then outside of that, we'll check with the treasurer on any money, or do you guys do that? Okay, and then how do we find out, the next meeting, or?
Yeah, you could, you could contact Danielle sometime next week, give me a day or two, I can check with the treasurer to see if there's any convenient-
I really appreciate it, we live in town, we've been here for twenty years now, we live in Halifax, and, so we wanna move over there, if we can. Take this time.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, on that note, on this note, uh, Delia Way wants to be, um, put on to our next agenda.
Oh, somebody left fifty to that.
Oh, that's probably a thorn down.
It's John, and, John, and he's a lawyer.
Oh, oh, it's John, all right.
Oh, we've been solid.
Hey, listen, if Biden's laptop is off limits, I have a feeling Halifax selectments-
Buy your way off the committee with, with that, that's fine.
Okay, let's do a minutes.
Um, I wanted to, um, Delia Way contacted me, a resident of Delia Way wants to be put on the agenda for our next meeting.
In regards to?
Their road, because it's been-
Oh, the condition of the road?
And what's going on, and they wanna be on our agenda.
Okay.
So can we make sure that, that Delia Way gets on our next agenda?
Yeah, I'm gonna contact, uh, Danielle and have her put on the-
Well, I'm putting it on here now, like, so that he doesn't have to, he doesn't email and things like that, so he stated that he just wanted me to bring it up tonight, and have it, so you can, as the chair, have her put it on the next agenda. A motion to put Delia Way on the next agenda?
Do I have a second?
For the resident?
There's a motion, do I have a second?
Second, I don't know why we wouldn't.
Any, Rick?
Why not, sure.
Yeah.
Tom, yes, Amy?
Yes.
Brendan?
Yes.
It's on the agenda.
Thank you.
Who is it that wants it on the agenda?
A resident.
From Delia Way, Jacob.
Unfortunately, it's not much we can tell.
I know, it's just gonna be the same, run around like-
Well, he was asking, so.
No, no, it's all good.
Yeah, why not?
It's all good.
Yep, it's all good. All right, let's move on to our last item then, which is, uh, minutes for, uh-
August twenty-second.
Do we got anything else on here? Couple of moments, sent it with Daniel with Mark, yes, yeah, minutes of August twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four.
I believe I asked them to have the adjustment of the first couple of minutes on there.
Right, there was a
Yeah, I've got like-
Quite a few adjustments, but we're on the, uh, August twenty-second.
Sorry. Goes on adjustments, so it's brown and blue anyways. But it still doesn't talk about any of the discussion that I had in the beginning with everybody. So.
Sweetie, what is the pleasure of the board?
I was not here, so I am going to remove myself, Rick?
Tom, Amy?
Move the minutes.
As presented?
As presented.
Um, there's a motion on the floor to move the minutes as presented, do I have a second?
A second.
There's a motion and a second to move the minutes as presented, uh, I'll ask for a voice vote, Rick?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Amy?
No, as they are just regarding, I think, again.
Do we need a motion to adjourn?
And, uh, plus, is there anything else, I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Oh, aye, yeah, aye, okay, aye.